I'm here to raise you.
Normally, welcome to the version I can do what I used to do with this. It was changed up what I did the service for. Always just started and that's what I do. So many people. I was always in state, and you got to play. You do it your own way.
It's just great to have you now, Martha in town.
I'm there. There ain't so many none.
Very sorry. He said he don't know. I heard my friend.
Well, that's not what you. Well, it's kind of pretty close.
I mean, he just said it here. I'd be trying to call him. That is the name.
Yeah. I'm glad that you're on my team. Yeah. I'm stronger. We love ours. Yeah.
I think I'm a free man.
You're in one meeting.
Bless all the others.
Mr. Dennis, would you please leave us in our invitation?
We thank you today for another wonderful day that you've given to us for all the opportunities that are contained within it. Thank you for the purpose it brings us here to be about the business of this county and all the people that live here. We pray for wisdom and guidance as we consider these matters. Should be honored in the midst of it all. We are grateful for the privilege of being here in this beautiful part of the world and the heritage that's brought us to this day, Lord, we are grateful for. Thank you for your gifts, your blessings. Pray your hand upon those that need to feel your touch even right now, Lord. We thank for it all, in Christ's name.
Let's please stand and Mr. Woody Young, would you let us in our pledge, please?
We are the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. If anyone that would like to speak to attended items, you must sign up with Ms. Cindy.
No, you don't have.
Does anybody?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We'll forgive you this time. All right, we'll move right along and today is our day that we appoint our officers and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Barry or to start it all off.
All right, I'd like to at this time, board, to open the floor for nominations for the position of chair for the Avery County Board of County Commissioners.
Do I nominate Mr. Martha Hicks?
Second. Okay, I have a first and a second. Do I have a motion to close the nominations?
Second.
Okay, nominations are closed. I need a vote for Martha J. Hicks to be chairman of the Avery County Board of Commissioners.
I'll sign.
You gotta raise your right hand. Is that good, Cindy? We good?
You're the right hand.
You see?
You're the right hand.
Both and nothing.
Madam Chairman, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Lord, I appreciate the nomination and I appreciate everyone that works on this board, how hard that we do try to work together and accomplish that that our county needs. And we'll move right along with our election for vice chairman. Do I hear a nomination?
Nominate Commissioner Tim Phillips.
All right.
Make a motion nomination cease. Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, board. Please.
All right, we'll move right along to our county manager.
Anybody else want to give a drop?
Nominate Mr. Phillips, please.
Second, that motion.
Nomination cease. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, board.
All right. Our county attorney.
Make a motion.
Straight.
Nominate Michelle Poor.
All right. I hear nomination cease.
Motion nomination cease.
All right. Everyone that's in favor of Ms. Michelle Poor being our attorney again, if she can put up with us, raise your hand.
If she can't put up with it.
Do you think? Do you think?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, our county finance officer. I hear nominations for the finance officer.
Caleb Hogan.
Second.
Motion nomination cease.
All in favor of Caleb, raise your right hand. Do want to thank Caleb for the good job that he's done for us in the past year. We struggled there for a while, finding the right person and boy, when he walked in the door, we know who he's been and we appreciate that.
Much.
All right.
This is the next part.
In life, but not least, our clerk and assistant county manager.
Nominate Cindy Kirby-Phil and move the nominations cease. All in one. Don't need nobody else checking.
All in favor of Ms. Cindy, raise your right hand. She is our right hand.
Do you think?
We appreciate everybody that serves our county. I just want to say that on the, I think I speak for the board when we say to the four or five of y'all, four, I guess, thank you for everything you do for the county. Our citizens don't realize what they've got, what we've got. We do, because we've been through some other times and we see what other counties have and so we thoroughly appreciate each and every one of them.
And we appreciate Star and Ashley and Dawn, they all work and we all work together. You try it one time and get somebody that don't work quick and you'll see how hard it is. So we've done it, all right. Proclaimations and awards, do we have any?
We do not, Madam Chairman.
I potentially do. Most of you know and saw it in the paper, but our county manager made businessman of the year and that's something that we're proud of. And we pulled it over him and he didn't know a thing about it, Ms. Ann. He didn't know. I said, well, sure, we're going, but I never said a word and he was surprised.
Very surprised.
And he was about to go. I shouldn't have told that.
Uh-oh.
Well, something else came out and then I thought, now we gotta go.
I'm just making sure you all, you all think that's.
We were going all along.
Bigger name on the other line.
All right.
The other boss at my house had something, another idea.
She's coming, too, but she's just pulling your leg.
And it was an honor, but without the taxpayers, this board's support, this hallway, every single employee that I get to privilege of working with, the servant hearts that are out there working every day is the reason I was recognized for that award. So it's not Phillips' award, it's our award and I appreciate every single person that has worked through this time in history that we had to pull together and didn't know what tomorrow would hold with this thing called COVID. But we've done great and I appreciate everybody. It's everybody's award, so thank you.
It's been a hard year with the COVID, but indeed, everybody's had it hard, but we would talk about it and make a decision and it worked out that the decision was the right one to make and we're thankful for that.
Very thankful.
I'm sure it'll be apologized, too. I'm not expecting anybody to bust through the door after me. I'm checking on my puppy out there in the car. She ain't tearing his teeth off.
I saw that pretty puppy.
She ain't tearing his teeth off.
Three point two, public comments. I believe maybe we have one here for a public comment. Mr. Dave Calvert, if you'd like, come up to vote him. Okay.
Everyone. Yes. This is my last official day as town alderman from Newland. I didn't run this year and I'm going to replace tomorrow with someone. I've got something that's been deeper sometime and Newland is a general rule. I spoke to Phil not too long ago. Um, county permission. I'm not entirely sure if this is just based on you, however, properties in the town of Newland have continued to be bought up by the county. Every county can't do whatever one do. Town of Newland is stretched beyond belief as far as the taxpayer. For example, if you look at the sidewalks, you look at the lighting system in Newland, you can't replace bulbs that can't replace. You go ahead and keep the lights on a lot of times. Reason can't do those things is because property tax, for example, is the same as the county's or right at it. Your home, when I pay, business, and the taxpayers as a general, they're strapped. Reason I have, want to point those things out is just because the tax base continues to get bought up by the county by purchasing properties in Newland. You know, it hurts the tax base and it puts it on businesses and all that. So with that said, I have a question for you. First question will be that, why do you subsidize the tax office, tax office?
I can answer that. It's simply because it's a service to the county citizens and we want that to continue to be a service.
I agree with it.
To keep that office open.
Okay, so with that said, I have a question for you. I have a count, if I'm told by Jamie Johnson, an average day, and I couldn't have this number wrong, but I asked and this is what it told me, it was twenty-five thousand. The residents of Newland are fifteen hundred. Newland Police Department has not only police in Newland, but also has the police in Newland as well, because this is the, this is the home of the county. So the reason I ask that, because I think for fair comparison, if Newland can't go ahead and pay for some of the, just get some sidewalks, they just now got their monies up for the police officers to be able to go ahead and hire people out of BLA, BLA Two would come and work for Newland, they'd work there for a year and then would go on somewhere else. So we finally got those monies up, about ready to go ahead and have to go ahead and do water and sewer rates again, new sanctions again, which is already more than it, as far as the burden of the people. The reason I mention that is because if commissioners would consider, when you look into your budget next year, look at some type of subsidy for the county or for the Newland Police Department, at very least, it might help us with some other finances moving in a different direction. Thank you for your service to the town. That's no question.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lee, did you want to?
Just like, I don't mean very brief. I don't, serving Avery County for twenty-six and a half years now proudly, this morning. Today's the first day that I have, I do not have a badge on. I called my favorite work as candidate for sheriff of Avery County this morning at noon. I've never, I realized in the past month, I have been around politics my whole career. I have realized in the past month that I am in politics now and there's a big difference. I thank y'all for y'all's service. People don't know how hard it is, how taxing it is on your family. You don't see hours that you don't get paid for, how you go into function to function. And as Andy Griffith done one time, eat spaghetti every three times a night. Avery County is a, is a great place to work. I've loved it. I've never went anywhere else. This is the only place that I have all my law enforcement credentials. Is what Ms. Manager said, but he and I go on back and forth a lot, we joke a lot. It's almost every day that me and the manager speaks on the telephone. I can only think of several other people that I talk to on the phone every day and they're my brothers, my actual brothers. And I'm talking to the manager and Ms. Andy and everybody. Caleb, y'all have done an awesome job picking the people that are leading the county today. All I'm here for is just to ask you for your prayers. I'm not going to ask you for anything else. All of us, a few of us.
Thank you for, thanks for, your willingness to serve the county and the service you've given.
All right. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak? Not, we'll move right along. Three point two, C, Rural Transportation Advisory Committee and Mr. Woody Hall Young has been serving on that committee and we need to nominate or appoint Mr. Young or anyone else if they feel like it, but I've never heard nobody come up and want to do that.
Move, reappoint to Mr. Young.
Second.
Boy, everybody was trying to get him on it one time.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
And thank you for picking up and getting something done about the transportation in Avery County, Mr. Young.
Thanks to the board for appointing me. I do service chairman of that, another one of those high paying boards.
All right. Three point two, two, Vai Health Regional Board. We need to appoint commissioner and our manager to take that long trip and go at night.
Universal sign for not it.
That is the most frustrating board I have ever served on.
That's another one of those high paying boards.
They are bringing it into regions and hopefully it'll help the meetings not be so long. Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Phillips has served on that previously and even though I'm sitting close enough for him to reach out and strike me, I'm going to nominate him.
I read it personally. He cannot reach me, so I say.
All in favor of Mr. Tim Phillips and the county manager, ask raise her right hand. And we will, on the other side, because I win. Maybe get you guys.
You know, if I may, Ms. Young, there are several of these boards you serve on that they pay absolutely nothing. It's, it's our responsibility as commissioners to serve on these boards, represent the people of Avery County and that they meet, these boards, a lot of them meet at night, a lot of them meet in the middle of the day and it's tough when you work to leave your job. Very fortunate if you have an employer that is sentimental to these things. I have always had and I greatly appreciate it, but it, people need to know that these, most of these boards you serve on for free, gratis. Don't pay whatsoever other than maybe you might get something done or get something for you.
How you learn what the county actually really needs is by being on the boards and listening to the people's comments.
At the time, we always turned to the commissioner on whatever board.
And we thought a public hearing at four o'clock, so we've got ten more minutes. Sharon, can you do yours in ten?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
That's the best thing I've heard all day. I was thinking on the way up here, this is the twenty-fourth year that I have stood here and presented your audit, so it's hard to believe I was doing this when I was five years old, but you know. It does, but it has, it has been a long time and I've certainly enjoyed the relationship with you guys. We'll go real quickly over the audit. If you'll turn to your audit, page five, and I think you all know me, but I'm sharing the recipe. I have a CPA firm in Spruce Line and as I said, twenty-four years is your auditor. Page five, middle of the page, opinions. In our opinion, based on our audit, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of Avery County. So again, if you had not passed the audit, you would not see that language. To remind you, this document goes from very broad to very specific, so if you want to know, for example, what kind of salaries were paid in the tax office, you go toward the back of the document to exhibit B one, but if you just want to look at the big picture, you stay in the front of the document. So that's how it's organized and there's about a hundred pages of it. But to paraphrase everything that has happened, there is the management discussion and analysis and it starts on page eight of the audit. So you'll see the bullets on page eight that tell what we feel are the highlights for the year. The first bullet says the asset exceeded your liabilities by fifty-five million. In other words, if you took all your buildings and your cash and everything that you owned, you paid off everything that you owed, in theory, you would have fifty-five million. You know, I'm not quite sure you can go around selling these for what their book value is, but nevertheless, on paper, worth fifty-five million. The second bullet, the net position increased by a net of six point nine million primarily due to capital improvements through the Avery High School. So what happens here with the high school, you build it, it stays on your books until it's finished and then you transfer it over to the Board of Education. So during the year last year, your, your position went up by nearly seven million dollars because you own that much more of that building. So in a few years, when that's finished or whenever it's finished.
A few years.
In a lot of years, when that's finished, you'll see your net position go back down because you'll have to transfer it out.
Clean up the muds, please. Spare people in this room, it probably won't make you to see it finished.
Okay, third bullet says at the close of the year, your government fund, your fund balance was thirty-two million and that is a net decrease of four hundred thousand. Now I'll tell you in just a minute why that's not really a concern, but it's mostly because of that high school that's brought into the mix of this decrease. But the fourth bullet, at the end of the year, your fund balance was fifty-nine percent. So when we look at what is a healthy fund balance and what is a minimum fund balance and all those things you're concerned with, with budgeting, yours is at fifty-nine percent and that is a healthy fund balance. Very minimum fund balance is eight percent and local government says you can only run for about one month if you only have an eight percent fund balance. They get very concerned and sometimes they even come in and start looking at your books themselves if you're down that low. There was a new process for submitting the audit this year and we had to do a transmittal document that had certain performance indicators. And your performance indicator, when it came to your fund balance, said it was above average because other counties of this size have a thirty-nine percent fund balance. So you are twenty percent above the other comparable sized counties. So those are the biggest things, of course, you know, you had a very strange year with COVID, with trying to decide how and when and where to spend your COVID money, trying to decide, you know, what was the next step logically, financially, probably. If you'll turn to page twenty, real quick, how the year ended up, and this is the page where the four hundred thousand that I said you decreased for the year comes into play. First column is your general fund. You can see you brought in just the general fund, which is the operations, sales tax, unrestricted grants, that kind of thing, three hundred seven million dollars. And your sales tax went up one point five million dollars last year. So all these people staying at home, shopping online, in theory, is what drove the sales tax up. So where we were concerned that COVID was having a detrimental effect on the economy and it did, it had a detrimental effect on, on all this other stuff, but it did help in this area because your sales tax revenue went up, so you were able to provide more, more different services for citizens. At the total expenditures, you were able to fund more to the high school for non-capital and their roof repair, but I'm sorry, the Board of Education, not the high school. You were able to fund more to the Board of Education as a whole. And overall, your expenses went up three million dollars, thirty-two million as opposed to twenty-nine on your last audit, leaving your excess for general fund at a little over five million. And you look at the next column, there's where it's coming in, over here at the high school is where it's going out. You see that your expenses here are the six point eight million dollars, so in the far column here for the totals, you net all that together and that's where you come up with your four hundred thousand dollar loss for the year. A couple of new things this year in this other non-major governmental fund. We have the ARP money that came in that had to be in a separate fund and then there was a new regulation that came into effect from GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, that said you had to set up special revenue funds for some new items that you hadn't had to have in the past. So just to point that out to you real quick, over here on page seventy-five. In the past, we've always put all these small funds in these columns. Well, this year there are four new columns, so this font is getting smaller and smaller, but the ARPA funds here are in their own, their own column at one point seven million. That's a special revenue fund that you have to budget for separately because of the Georgia statute of how to treat the ARPA fund. Pay representative fund, these are the funds that DSS is holding for various users of DSS services. So that used to be something that we presented in the audit, but it wasn't a fund that you as a board had to budget for. Now you actually have to come up with a budget for that. Funds and forfeitures, this one is a certain amount collected by the register of deeds per month. And the, sorry, the register of deeds fee fund is the amount collected by the register of deeds per month, that's seven fifty per mortgage or deed that is registered. And then the funds and forfeitures are funds and forfeitures that are passed through you and paid to the Board of Education. So in all three of these last ones I mentioned, it's, it's nothing new, it's just that now you have to start budgeting for it. It's almost out of your control because a shot in the dark, how much money is coming through DSS and how much money will come in for the funds and forfeitures. You can't really. And you can't really say, I want to spend it on this or that because it's already designated to go to. You do have to be aware that that's something that has to be incorporated into your budget. But overall, everything looked great. You had a good year, was able to do a lot. Be focused on COVID expenditures and found no problems with those because that was one of your new grants for the year. And I'll admit that when you had a new finance officer, I was, I was concerned. Because I had been used to everything being so clean and in really good shape and you never know what you're walking into. But I'm thoroughly impressed with Caleb's performance. He's just done an excellent job. His, his understanding of this already is surpassing a lot of other finance officers that I work with. So I'm very impressed with that.
Don't take on him. You're going to raise if you do.
But there, there were no findings and everything looked, looked great to us. Have any questions for me?
That is included. It always comes up.
It's part of, it's not separated out in its own place on here, but it is part of your public safety. So every time you see something about public safety and particularly the fire department, you'll see.
Thank you. Thank you. You did good. And go into. Okay. We hear a motion to approve the. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Now it's time for our public hearing. Uh, our public hearing is the two thousand and twenty-two Schedule of Values. And we're gonna ask Mr. Bruce Daniels to do this.
We need a motion to go into public hearing.
Public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Okay.
Right, Bruce. That's important.
Yeah, it's the Schedule of Values, it's just the set of rules that we're going to use for this next. Uh, price per square foot, appraisal procedures. Everything that we use in our office in order to establish values, to establish the tax base of the county, is essentially based on that Schedule of Values. So this is, is rules that we have to play by as a tax office, we can tax outside of the Schedule of Values. Hundred pages of junk for the most part, but there are some, there are some pearls of wisdom in there if you know where to look, so.
You said it that way.
Um, a lot of it doesn't change from revow to revow, it's just really basically what does change is when we. When we have economic issues that come up, the result of the construction going up. Apparently at some point in time it may go down, but I'm not sure when that will. Well, this is, it is, we have to live by to establish.
Our rule is to do it every four years, right?
State requires every eight, they're going to, they're trying to push that to every four, but we've been in a situation where we're doing.
Here in other counties talk, they wish they'd have never had to fly it to those eight years.
Eight years is a stretch on the market just simply because. Depending on when the revaluation is timed, you can be stuck with extraordinarily high or extraordinarily low values for the following years in between. Four years gives a, as difficult as it can be to do all the parcels in the county in a four. Doing, and you're able to solid value for that, for that four-year period. Eight years, like I say, that. We were to. First two years of an eight-year cycle, we were to have what we've had in the past two. Market crashes out and you have super elevated values in a unbelievably depressed market. Got a chance to correct that in a, in a four-year cycle or an eight-year cycle, just.
And that, and that makes it more fair for the taxpayers.
Yes.
It really does.
Ultimately, that's.
To do a four-year reevaluation makes the taxes that we charge and people pay fair. Sometimes you get the federal government injecting all kinds of money into the economy for no reason and inflation running crazy, but that would never happen.
All right, do we have any?
So. Anybody from the public have a comment about the revaluation for Bruce?
I will say this, for those that are in the room, those that may be watching. Values are gonna go up. Um, in some places, values are gonna go up substantially. Like you would. Um, and even obviously to that. We'll see. On sale. They're really. Warranted, you know. Not have to give anyone, we're not have to play favors, we're not have to cut roads, we're not have to do any of this other stuff. Fortunately for this particular time.
Anyone else have a comment? Nothing else, I hear a motion that we go out of our public hearing.
I think most of we go out in public hearing.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, we need a motion to accept the Schedule of Values, the two eighty twenty-two.
Blake made the motion, I hear the second, all right, Kim's second, it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We need to amend our agenda. Right here and. We have a. For that, Michelle, is that what it is?
Yeah.
It's a resolution. For the Avery County border.
American Rescue Program.
Okay. We got to the three. It is. I did. The resolution, whereas Avery County is receiving certain American Rescue Program funds, which require reporting of interest income generated from those funds. And whereas in order to complete with the report requiring of the American Rescue Program funds, it is necessary to establish a new account with the North Carolina Capital Management Trust. And whereas the finance office will need to file an application to establish an account with the North Carolina Capital Management Trust. Now therefore be it resolved that the Avery County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the Avery Finance Officer to apply for an account with the North Carolina Capital Management Trust for the county for American Rescue Plan Fund. And the finance officer is authorized to sign any applications and related documents in order to establish the account. I hear that we adopt this resolution.
Wait a minute. You're amending the agenda, putting under the finance officer's.
Oh, you're not gonna adopt it.
Not yet, we'll, we'll do that under, under Phil. Oh.
Under Caleb.
Whatever, whatever your name is. Sorry about that.
Well, we'll, we'll adopt that here in three point four B. Finance Officer.
We need to have a motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah, I'll work around that first.
Move and amend the agenda.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. All right, now then. We go to three point three B, Northwestern Regional Housing Authority, Mr. Ned Fowler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our members, happy to be here with you. I have to. Thank the commission and your dedicated staff for their continuing efforts to help those around Avery County. And my name is Ned Fowler, I'm founder and director, Northwestern Regional Housing Authority. I have to thank none other than one of our own, Woody and his family. They, oh, you do have a dear one, I see him now. That's cool. He, I wanted to thank Woody and his, and his family for being with us for all these years and helping out these services that we try to do to help the citizens here in Avery and also bring you greetings from our current trustee representing Avery County, George Park. Very appreciative of the work that you do. I recognize that your purview is broad and so I'll be very brief this evening. I just wanted to, with your permission, to spend a few minutes, focus here on the needs of the area related to housing in Avery County. As you know, Avery County has a population of around seventeen thousand, made up of about sixty-seven hundred households. You may know that Avery County has a poverty rate of fifteen point one percent. And twenty percent of your renter households and fifteen percent of your homeownership households are cost burdened. Definition of cost burdened is a household that is spending more than thirty percent of their income toward housing and utilities. Stack up well, according to statewide, because the statewide margins are worse than that. But it is, it is a problem and you don't have to look far to see that, that it is a difficulty. The, also learned from a new study just released from O and National Research that Avery County has a multifamily vacancy rate of zero. There are no vacancies in your multifamily housing in Avery County at any price point. We also learned from that study, this one surprised me, median listing price of homes for sale in Avery County today is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. We're probably not gonna jump up and rush out and buy a house in that market. This means, ladies and gentlemen, that we have housing affordability problems in Avery County, but we also have housing availability problems. We simply don't have enough decent housing to house everybody that lives here and everybody that wants to live here and work here. The county manager receives calls every week from young professionals starting out in their careers in law enforcement, teaching, nursing, local government, many other working trades who cannot afford rental place in Avery County. And you know they can't afford the median listing price if they're starting out early in their careers. So. Northwestern Regional Housing Authority helps many in Avery County that are priced out of the market, both on ownership and rental. Our largest programs are rental assistance. They assist primarily some of these young households that are just starting out, about fifty percent of our rental clients fall into that category. The other half of the families that we help with element of rental assistance are families that contain elderly and household disabled members on fixed income. I don't know how your booklet that, that Mr. Turbifield and Mr. Perry have put together is organized, but if you can get to page twelve of the little colorful pamphlet that we supplied there, the annual report, I'll just show you quickly. Not gonna read this pamphlet to you, by the way, if you get stuck in an airport, this, this would be really interesting to me. But I do want to point out the, the Avery County economic impact because these are not dollars that are echoed somehow. These are actual dollars that we're spending in Avery County every year consistently for the, the last many, many years. Total program cost right close to one point four million dollars annually in Avery County is what we're spending. And one hundred seventy-nine families assisted every month, an annual cost of just over a million dollars. Uh, families coun, fifty-five families counseled, fifteen families enrolled in self-sufficiency. That's really an interesting program where families that are receiving the assistance actively pursue educational informant goals to try to get off the assistance. Very effective program. I hope that some of you have had the opportunity to go out and see our El Park School that, that we redid about fifteen years ago. Absolutely stunning, historic adaptive reuse over there for forty units of senior affordable housing. And it makes a very effective community, there are great services going on out there. Uh, one and two-bedroom apartments, really nice. It's staffed during the daytime, please stop by if you're out that way. If you haven't been inside the building since it was rehabilitated, it's really something to see. And of course, we pay all the rents, all the government portion of the rents out there at the historic El Park School and also right up the street here at Level Cove at the thirty-unit development affair. That, that project would not have been built without our board's commitment to pay the government rental assistance there on those thirty units. In addition to that, we've got one hundred and seventy-nine families that are scattered around the county with private rental landlords that would pay their share of the rent every month as well. Regionwide in the seven counties, those payments to private rental landlords add up to about a million dollars a month at Northwest Regional. So it's gotten to be pretty big business. Seven hundred and fifty participating rental landlords across the region, two thousand assisted households across the region. We're glad to help when we can and I do hope to be back before you sometime next year. We've got some pipeline development work going on that's gonna be specifically for people in need in Avery County and in, in working situations and looking forward to trying to make some of that become a reality. Uh, that's our, our pipeline focus for twenty twenty-two financing applications is directly for, to affect Avery County. You've, you've come to the top of the list for, for the Regional Housing Authority. And once again, we're glad to have. Keep you posted and updated on that. In the meantime, if you have contacts from citizens, constituents that have a housing problem, contact me, let me know. If we don't have an answer, we'll find you one. Appreciate everything that you're doing and thank you for your patience with me. Have a great evening.
I just want to thank Ned for answering the phone every time we call because I think we talk two or three times a month.
That's a lot.
Yeah. And so, and I appreciate the time he puts on the ground here in Avery County addressing these, so thank you.
I feel the same way, Phil, appreciate your work and we'll get some good things.
We're gonna try to get it tapped.
Get some good things done again, thank you. Oh, and by the way, we've never come to the county in my forty-two years and asked you for any of your general revenue. I promised when we incorporated this board that we wouldn't do that and we've kept that promise and we're not coming to either of them. If you can fund us through federal conduit or some other kind of money that doesn't come out of your tax payer pocket and act as a, as a conduit funder for us, then fine, we'll sit and discuss that, okay? Fair enough.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good to see you, buddy.
Ned, thank you.
I will move front alone to three point three C, our tax administrators' report, Bruce Daniel.
Good afternoon again. Start with, I'd like to submit the November collections. Five million, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
Good for Bruce. Thanks.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Two point one million of that came in and, and in one envelope from a mortgage company. They had sixteen hundred and twenty-six bills spread across fifty-three different checks. That, that, that takes a good amount of time for somebody to sit and process all of that. So the, the girls in the office managed to get all of that processed and balance to the penny. So it's a tough job that they've got this time of year, but they're doing a great job. Unfortunately, we have. collections, some Mr. Young sometimes come to leases, so I have a total of four thousand and sixty-six dollars and five cents. a total of four thousand and sixty-six dollars and five cents for your approval.
Move through.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
As you can see with the revaluation sales, we've actually, you know, a hundred and seven qualified sales for November. That's actually down from last year at a hundred and forty-two. But with the report that we just received, there's just, there's nothing on the market right now. There's literally very few listings to be had. If they're, if they're there, you've got multiple people vying over them. So it's a situation of not necessarily the real estate market's starting to clear off, it's just there is no supply in particular.
I got one.
You've got one, you're, you're ready to move on.
I got one on the market.
All right. We'll, we'll put some people in touch with you. So we'll, we'll see if we can have that taken care of by this time next week. But we have a hundred and seven sales, we're at sixty-eight percent, which again just shows that we're right on course for our revaluation coming at the right time. Where we're just trying to catch up to the market.
ERDC.
River Development Corporation.
Oh, it's just Elk River.
Yes, sir.
I figured it was.
All that Elk River is.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's two in Elk River. The Laurel's is actually down at the top of Gusher's Knob Road. And there's a subdivision going in down there with some, with some higher-end homes. So.
No internet.
And no internet.
Well, you better get to work.
The top two are in the same subdivision, the top of Gusher's Knob, but the preceding are at Elk River, and then the other one is just a large acre sale. It's definitely the same size as what those lots were, what the rural acreage price in the county.
In that half-mile-to-dollar general.
Hey, that's, the fact that we have those multiple-dollar generals around, it's
It's a game changer.
Absolutely, really, truly, and I'm just waiting for one to come up on the old beach mountain here. Is that the last place where we could have one that would do something?
And I'm wanting cross.
Thank you, Bruce.
All right. Thank you all.
All right, so move right along to three point four A, our county manager's report.
You can't complain about it, because you've bugged it for me, so. We're good, right? So, we still complain, okay. So, a COVID update. Feel like we're on the right track, we're doing the right thing. I encourage everyone to please be careful, keep distance, wear masks when you feel like it's appropriate, wash your hands, get back soon if you want to. Numbers are looking good. Last November, we had four hundred and twenty-four positive cases. This November, we only had a hundred and nineteen. So things are definitely on the right track. This past week, there were forty-five cases. Unfortunately, the fourteen to eighteen-year-old population, there were ten in that population. So if anyone wonders why the band was not able to be in the Christmas parade, they were doing the right thing in quarantine, a lot of those band students. So that's why they were not able to do and be in Saturday's Christmas parade. So that's just it on COVID. There are vaccines available, there are visitors available, and the testing clinic is open six days a week. So if anybody needs any information, they can call the eight-two-seven-three phone number. Anybody got any questions on anything else COVID-related? Can't wait till the day we don't have to talk about this anymore. That'd be great. The American Rescue Plan update, I had that put on there Thursday, knowing that I had a Zoom meeting with the Commissioners Association on Thursday afternoon, but still got a lot of great news about the American Rescue Plan. We're still waiting on final guidance, we're still waiting on rules. Been with High Country Council Governments, they are pledging to help us with all the paperwork and all the extra grants that we're going to need to submit. So I will keep you posted as soon as things are available. We're ready, Art McCallum, we just, we need final guidance from the, from the Treasury. And. So unless, if anybody won't go to the White House, if you would pick up our copy of the final guidance for Avery County, we would, we will get started. We've not forgot about it, it's here, and part of that resolution that we'll do later is part of, part of the rules. Dogwood Trust will be here tomorrow. I have a meeting here in the boardroom with the town to begin that inventory and assessment for the county. They'll help with our housing needs. So we are on the right track. I wish we could have had this meeting six years ago, so we could have that asset, inventory ready to go. But you heard Ned here today, housing is a problem, and housing is something that we are going to address. So thanks again to the Dogwood Trust for the grant we did get, and hopefully we can get some footers and some buildings on the ground, because talking about it doesn't put anybody in an apartment or a home, and that part of it is frustration on my part. Is that twelve o'clock? Yes. Broadband update. Two o'clock this afternoon, I had a, one of the broadband companies in my office were getting some leases and things together. Got them a list out of the state budget on page G seven of the budget is eight resources of money that's pledged in the state budget toward broadband. Again, the High Country Council Governments, myself, and these broadband companies will make sure that Avery County gets their share of this money. Again, we do not have authority to do this as of yet, we're waiting on final guidance. And I know that don't put internet at your house, but we are going to get there, we believe. With the money that's pledged on this paper, including the great grant that will now allow tier-two counties to have part of, it's two hundred and seventy-seven million dollars, another four hundred thou, four hundred million is in a separate budget, and another seventy-two million in a separate budget. So that are grants that we can apply for, for Avery County, and we will apply. Any questions on broadband? We will, yep, we will try to, we will try to do our part. Quickly, on the website, the video for the Avery Community Center is now on the website, so that is good. The opioid settlement, we have done our memorandum of agreement, and the national settlement is also in your agenda packet. The ad for the chamber guide is also in your agenda consent items, so look at that. It is beautiful, says, changed the, what it says, and I think it's really going to have a great impact. Also, in your information items, you have a report from our new veterans officer. Since July, when she was getting trained and started, she's found a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in benefits for our local veterans. So when you see that young lady, applaud her and thank her for the hard work that she is doing. The landfill schedule is also in the packet for the upcoming Christmas holidays, so they will be closed Friday, the twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and Sunday. They will reopen on Monday. So everyone will have to get their Christmas stuff ready to go, and Monday will be a big day, the twenty-seventh will be a big day. And also in your agenda consent items is our FEMA rep, our contract. We need to renew that contract because we are still taking requests to FEMA for dollars in reimbursement. That's all I have in a nutshell. Any questions?
Appreciate the information and everything and the validity of it all. I'd like to take just a moment, if I could, to maybe give just a bit of context to some of the, like, the housing situation that Ned was talking about, and that we may have some numbers that come out of this meeting tomorrow concerning median prices and that type of thing. And I would, I would just make everyone aware of the statistical basis of those, of those numbers. And median, you know, being half above and half below, and, and keep in mind that the only takes one or two seven-figure homes to skew that number greatly on the upward side of the model. And doesn't necessarily mean that every house that you go look for is that price, even though everything's going up, as I said, but I just think we, we need to be, like, like so many things, the, the upper end of the spectrum causes the numbers to not represent totality of what happens. It affects it in an adverse manner, because, you know, one five-million-dollar house includes a meter a lot more than one two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house. So we just need to be aware of that as we look at those numbers. And the same thing true, as we as the commissioners look at the totality of everything that we do and the law of unintended consequences, this internet access and the things that we're trying to get done, were we able to provide that coverage throughout the county, that in turn would open up many areas of the county for developers that currently do not strive to be there. So in doing so, we, we create more opportunity, but also more things we have to be aware of. So as we have learned, nothing happens in a vacuum, and everything has repercussions and reaches out beyond itself. So as, as all these things, and they're all good, and we're pushing every button we possibly can, but we're also doing it with an awareness of what, what those things are going to produce down the road.
We will move along to three point four B, our finance officers' report.
To the board, thanks for having me. The reapportment, I certainly appreciate. I have three items plus the amended item to present to you today. Item number one, in order to keep the high school renovation moving forward in an effort to prevent further delay, the following budget amendment will need to be made to the project ordinance. The board adopt the following budget amendment to debit transfer to project fund school, general fund line item seven thousand dot sixty-two forty, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars and seventy-seven thousand thirty-two dollars, and to credit fund balance appropriated, general fund thirty-nine ninety, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand thirty-two dollars. To debit general construction, project fund forty-five, line item sixty-six hundred dot four-zero-zero-four, in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. To credit high school renovation interest income, project fund forty-five, line item thirty-one oh five, in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And to credit transfer from general fund, project fund forty-five, line item thirty-one oh one, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars, eighty-seven thousand thirty-two dollars.
All right.
Move through, second.
All in favor, say aye.
I asked for one more information on that, and I may have missed a memo on that.
Yes. So there was some more change orders that had came in, and to not delay the project further. So what, what was proposed at the last meeting was to take the interest income that we received off our sterling loan and set it in an interest-bearing account, and that amount is one hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars to date, and that leaves the fund balance appropriated.
I didn't get that, I just didn't know that was, I didn't connect it to. I've got that information, I apologize. I just, there's not a thing I, now, so I can say about that whole situation.
The same we can say when you're finished.
Item number two, personnel changes in central dispatch. The following budget amendment will need to be made. The board adopt the following budget amendment. Debit salary EMS director fifty-three hundred dot zero-two-zero-zero, in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Debit FICA fifty-three hundred dot zero-five-hundred, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Debit retirement, general fund line item fifty-three hundred dot zero-six hundred, in the amount of one thousand ninety dollars and eighty-three cents. Debit 401K retirement, general fund line item fifty-three hundred dot zero-eight hundred, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-two cents. Debit salary director, general fund line item fifty-two fifty dot zero-two hundred, in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. FICA administration, general fund line item fifty-two fifty dot zero-five hundred, in the amount of six hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Retirement, general fund line item fifty-two fifty dot zero-six hundred, in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. 401K retirement, general fund line item fifty-two fifty dot zero-eight hundred, in the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents. Debit salary dispatchers, general fund line item eighty-two hundred dot zero-two-ten, in the amount of four thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Debit FICA, general fund line item eighty-two hundred dot zero-five hundred, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Debit retirement, general fund line item eighty-two hundred dot zero-six hundred, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Debit 401K law, general fund line item eighty-two hundred dot zero-eight hundred, in the amount of one hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents. And to debit salary director, general fund line item eighty-two hundred dot zero-two hundred, in the amount of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and eight cents.
Do I hear a motion on?
Need to press.
I have a question, I don't know if it needs to be asked here or not.
You want to ask? All right. All right, you have a motion, and? Second, Dana, all in favor, say aye. All right.
To the board, item number three, the East Department of E-911, E-911 NC DIT has notified the Department of Central Dispatch, the E-911 fund will only cover maintenance for three primary CAD positions and not the five backed-up inclusive in the maintenance agreement. And software ineligible expense totaling four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents will have to be paid back to the E-911 fund. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit transfer to E-911 fund, general fund line item seven thousand dot sixty-two fifty, in the amount of four hundred and, four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents. To credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item thirty-nine ninety, in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents. Debit fund balance appropriated, E-911 Fund Twenty-Two, line item thirty-nine ninety, in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents, and credit transfer to E-911 system, E-911 Fund Twenty-Two, line item thirty-one oh one, in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents.
Move through.
All right, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
The last item, the item, the resolution, does that need to be read again?
I don't think it needs to be read again. All right. We have a resolution on our packet for the American Rescue Program. Do I hear a motion that we adopt this resolution?
Move through.
All in favor, say aye.
That's all I have, unless I have any questions.
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. May I add, that test room really brings out your eye.
All right, we'll move right along to three point four C, our county attorney's report.
One thing that the board needs to take action on, there's a proposed resolution for the board to consider. Mr. Barry has forwarded some information to the EDC from McDowell County. They're having their county line survey, the common line between McDowell and Burke, and as part of that, they have to inform and enjoy. And as part of that, they have to inform adjoining counties. And get the adjoining counties. Avery County does not object to the survey occurring between the common boundary line.
Tell anybody that famously leases is really entirely in McDowell County. One hundred percent it is. They made a, they made a real good tourist campaign on that, but it's one hundred percent in McDowell County.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we adopt this resolution?
That part of the parking lot tonight, right?
Some of it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's the only thing that I have for the board to consider.
All right. Well, thank you. Three point five staff reports and requests. Do we have anything, Mr. Manitch?
Madam Chairman, we do not.
And Michelle, we don't have anything in the closed session today.
No, we do not have anything in the closed session.
And three point seven, we see that our secretary has really went to work on the minutes. They were little short things that had to be took care of, but we got them all taken care of. On October the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, there was a special meeting. October the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, a special meeting. November the first, two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting. November the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, a special meeting. Does everyone has had a chance to read the minutes? Does he have any changes? Are we ready to adopt?
Move to approve, they recorded.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we talked about our agenda consent items, some of them. And you've had time to read over all of them. Do we have any questions or anything about the consent items? Not, those will be adopted by consent. And three point nine, the informational items. We will be having our Christmas dinner December the sixteenth at twelve o'clock. And all the commissioners, we do give a gift for the drawing at our dinner of twenty-five. Some people give fifty, whatever you want to give, what kind of gift you want to buy. So, we have something in the kitty. All right. And Philip's already told about the schedule for our dump sites, our landfills. And it will be on our website.
It is on the website and they've got these to pass out at the site also, so.
It'll take you one boogie to come because you'll always get a call.
And they do recycle the Christmas trees and they'll take those at Limbore and at the landfill down at, so those sites will take the Christmas, Christmas trees.
And we do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and most of all, stay well and be safe. All right. And our next meeting will be in the New Year.
January third.
Third. You know what's the best thing about a New Year's? You're going to get a year older sometime in that year. And we do thank everyone for coming and everything that you've done in the past year. I think our county has well been recognized in the past year. And I will make speak of a comment. They had a program out at our community building.
Probably not.
Probably not. And they said there was some real good attendance and the quavers was there and my penny girls that signed, I didn't get to go, but we're thankful that we've got the community building and it is being used. We do want to thank Jerry Moody and Sam for scheduling everything and it's really.
If you want to use it, you better call and get it on the schedule.
And we want to thank Miss Sam for a nice meal and I'll let the Chamber of Commerce do thank you. And.
And the ad layout is beautiful for this year, so great job.
And if no one has anything else, we will adopt our newcomer here, the little. And.
What's her name like?
Molly.
Molly.
We will ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor, let's go home. And we do want to thank, now Philip wants to get the credit for all these pretty decorations, but his wife and Buffy Clark stayed here all day and one day and did this for us and we want to.
I was cleaning out my drawers in the back and I found these that I thought may be interesting. Nineteen ninety-nine, but they're, it's a Christmas ornament for, and it's got the, it's the courthouse on it.
Oh.
And I, I thought this would be mine, even though it's nineteen ninety-nine.